And now they say they're getting a.
Do the online.
I know, I like to tangibly cut things out sometimes with Carly still, once she's out of school, then maybe not such a big deal.
See, they used to put candidates when they took out a petition on page one.
Got it.
Now it's page eight.
Okay, it's on, Lee. And we're live.
Either all the rooms are the same or that one, you've got the same room you had before.
It is nine, are we streaming? Okay, we are streaming, it is 9:00 AM. I will just mention that Commissioner Gable will be joining us via, whatever you want to.
Virtual?
Virtually. And so we will, I'll call this meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order, it is Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe it's my turn to lead today, so. All right, I will just mention that if you have a cellphone, if you please silence it, if you need to take a call, you could step out, and we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment, we will still take calls from individuals that, items that are not on the agenda and for information only, the two phone numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict interest items, are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
Nope.
Item number four, action to approve the January 11th, 2022 agenda, motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the January 4th, 2022 minutes of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen, any additions or corrections? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. We'll move on to monthly reports, and we'll start with the auditor.
January is definitely the busiest month of the year for us, we are currently working, our accounting system allows us to make a few entries so that we can work in two years at once. So we are working in the new year while we're still closing out the old year. Property tax notices have been run and we are being prepared right now to be mailed out in the next week or so. W2s for employees have been run and provided. Our audit is still ongoing with the Department of Legislative Audit, and the first of our 2022 election notices is being worked on for publication yet this month. It's a notice that we're required to publish advising which offices are up for election and filing a petition deadline, so. That's about it.
All right, anyone have any questions for Cindy? Not hearing any, let's move on then to Director of Equalization and with Shawna, good morning Shawna.
Morning Shaw.
Okay, so we are also really busy right now, we're basically doing all of our year-end stuff to get ready to send out our assessment notices at the end of next, or yeah, at the end of next month. The appraisers have finished up all the fieldwork out in the reappraisal areas in the townships that we're doing, and I am working on putting values, doing the ratios, things like that. And now they're currently doing all the city Watertown building permits, we are done out in the county, so we just have the city ones left. We did have, the Department of Revenue came kind of last minute, the last week in January to do just the sales audit. And basically, they just go through the sales for the whole entire year, double check their validity, basically, we only use the good sales, so they go through each one. And he was, he's a newer field staff, field specialist is what they call them, but he's been in the association for a long time. He actually committed my staff on their organization and their thoroughness with the, with the sale, so that was really nice, he wants to use us as an example with the other counties, but the girls aren't, don't want everyone calling them, but, so they did really, really well, which we usually do and we try to be anyway. And then, since that was done, we were able to send in our attentions for this coming year's assessments, we need to hear back from that. Otherwise, we're just trying to finish things up to get ready for the big push, and as soon as the tax was, well, we saw it, fielding a bunch of phone calls on, on that. And then go from there, it's gonna be a rough year, but hopefully everybody realizes what the market's doing and we can go from there, so.
Great. Thank you. Sounds good.
That's all I got.
Anyone else leave, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so just a quick, what do you expect to hear back from DOR on your, you said, the word was intentions?
Yep, we send the attentions in or do the beginning of January, basically it just shows where our level of assessment is and then what we have to raise our assessments to be in compliance. Sometimes we hear before the assessment notices are sent out, sometimes not, but that just basically gives us our state factor, so they just have to relook at everything and just check the spreadsheets and all the math and all that stuff.
So this is the percentage of assessed value that is taxable, basically, is that what we're talking about?
Yep, yep, basically where our level of assessment is according to sales, that's what figures out the amount yours, of your assessed value that's actually taxable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm sure I'd just like to commend the staff in your office, you and, and your staff for another successful year, job well done, good job.
Especially if they're going to be examples in the state.
Yeah, busy.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you Shawna. All right, then, let's move on to the Welfare Director Report with Sarah. Good morning Sarah.
Thank you, morning.
Can I see, you brought someone along with you?
I did, I did, and I sent it to Lee so she can post it.
It's all right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You want to bring her right on up?
Do you want, do you want Hunter to come up? So this is Hunter, I'm just gonna introduce her to you, Hunter Harvey with ICAP, she's the new case manager.
Right in the hot seat, right away.
Yeah, yeah, so again, we're happy to have Hunter in the office, we'll be able to pick up some of the case management pieces and alleviate some of the load from carrying myself, so we can focus on the other areas of priority.
Say your name one more time, Hunter, Hunter, do you have a last name? Harvey?
Yeah.
Hunter Harvey, H H. Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, so yeah, that's going.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Um, so the report itself, there is the graphs on the back, again, December was a little bit quieter, there was a lot of carryover from November as far as case management pieces of things that we were doing. Again, I'm looking forward to getting the new charting system in place because I think that will better reflect, I noticed when I was going back in that we've actually missed a couple, some contacts, some people in these numbers as well, so the numbers are for what they are, this is where we're at, there was another funeral expense last month, and so some of that continues. Any questions on any of that piece of it?
So, so housing is still the big, the big thing, if you're to say, what's, what's the busiest thing, Sarah, it's, it's gonna be the, the housing and?
Yeah, housing and utilities, and that comes from the cares support.
Right.
Yeah, again, the case management piece, I actually think probably, well, for me, that was where I spent a significant amount of my time, but that's not really reflected in these numbers because that's a lot of time with a few people, is what happens with that, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You said that we have had one burial that's not listed on the sheet.
Yeah, well, so actually, I think it will be reflected in the number totals, but it was a burial that had happened, we paid it out last month, so. But it had happened previously, they were looking into other payment options, there were no other payment options, and so they came back to the county, it had been approved, they were looking into some other options, and then those didn't look out, then they came back. Yeah, I also included that apartment data, we had mentioned that last month, and so I kind of compiled it, and since, so since June 1st, when we got the apartment, there's been six individuals or families that have stayed there for an average of 26 days with a range of 14 to 45 days. Four of those families or individuals have found permanent housing, and so then obviously two of them have not, and so we had to ask those two to leave without permanent housing, they hadn't made progress towards that. It, it really is so complicated, it's really, you can't just say, we're gonna give you this time and find a house, you know, for the one that took 45 days, that was just how long the process took for them to secure permanent housing, and so it's a complicated issue. I, I think there would, there would, would be great if we had other entities in our community doing housing. I'm not sure, it should be on the county, but because there's nobody else doing it, it's a need for our citizens in our community.
The part that's most cumbersome is getting them into housing that's, that they're able to afford, so that's where we run into the issue of.
Affordable housing issue.
Yes.
That's not a new issue for us here.
No, no, and yeah.
Yeah, but it's getting better, hopefully.
Right, we're hoping, we're hoping, we're gonna work towards addressing some of those issues, yeah, yeah, so, but it is a complicated issue. As far as cares and ERA, technically cares expired at the end of December, so everything is ERA now. And so in December, she did 100 hours, $5,000 administrative fees were reimbursed, and we have started, we have received the checks for us to be the administrator of that, and so those have come through to Cindy. ICAP, the new employee, is obviously here, we're happy to have her, I think she's gonna be a great fit with our office, so, we'll, we'll be wonderful. So the things in our office, the Helpline Center, we are still hoping that we will start implementing that software system for our office in February, that's when we would start it. I did submit the Community Health Worker Grant, and I'm hoping that they will actually approve the higher amount to cover the full cost of that staff person, so that we can really evaluate if that's gonna save the county money in the long term. Again, the goal of that is to reduce recidivism and incarceration times with that, and just contacts with the legal system in the community. I did complete the NACO Leadership Course, it was a great opportunity, so again, thank you for that. And then for the South Dakota Association of County Welfare Officials, we are continuing those discussions regarding state laws. I met with Lee Shonbeck last week to get some guidance on how to proceed with that, and so he was very helpful in guiding how we, the process we need to go through for that. And then the Systems of Care in the back is, appropriately, for me, I, I didn't think it was technically a flowchart, but I didn't know what to call it, so it's more of a work breakdown than a flowchart of the social services in the community. Just because I was needing a visual of what is happening in our community, a lot of people don't really understand all the different pieces that are in place, and so this is to give people a visual of what's happening. The strategic planning, which has started, is the, is over everything to address everything, and then the system of care with the three goals of improving agency communication, building community awareness and education, and addressing community needs, what we found is we're really not gonna be able to fully address the community needs without really focusing on that awareness and education. And then the pink under there are some of the things that are currently happening to address those goals and to meet those goals, so lots of good things happening, lots of moving parts, and this is a way to give a visual to all of those moving parts. Any questions on that, any suggestions?
I think it's a good, it's a good depiction, I, I would imagine it's gonna develop as you guys keep working, and you know, as you, you could run this into a lot of details, I would imagine. And, but it is kind of a good, it gives you a good appreciation of, of all that needs to be happening in the community.
Yeah. Yeah. And then we're hoping to start the community-wide network of care for that software system, we're hoping that that will start being implemented across the community in March, jumping back, this, the strategic planning, we did have our first meeting, and we'll have our first in-person meeting at the end of February to start working through that process, looking at the data and establishing our vision for what we want that to look like. And then Resilient Communities, we had, there had initially been talk about starting some community meetings with that, but with everything else that's going on, we decided to focus right now on just getting the community trained in that adverse childhood experiences or ACEs training, and so we have two of those meeting, two trainings set up, one for February 8th and the other one for March 3rd. And then in addition to that, I just got those dates yesterday, I forgot to tick this up, but in addition to that, then we're hoping that we can meet with different agencies and organizations throughout the, the community and provide trainings to their staff, so if there's anyone in the community looking for that adverse childhood experience training for staff, employees, community, churches, we would love to provide that training to them, and really get our community all talking the same language regarding that trauma.
And then how to address it.
Yes, yes, and how to move forward, exactly, yeah.
I went through that training and it's quite eye-opening, things that you wouldn't expect.
Yeah, it's very interesting, yeah, in the ways it affects, oh, like, all, all, all over.
Absolutely. So.
Any questions, are you?
I had a question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Go ahead, Lee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Sarah, on the legislative, legislative efforts with your statewide association, what, can you give us an idea of kinds, the kinds of issues that they're talking about, I mean, this might be something where the County Commission Association wants to be. I'm just wondering about the dialogue between the two, so.
I, I definitely think as it gets, goes down the road, that it will definitely need to be a conversation with the commissioners. The biggest, well, so the, the chapter of the statute that governs welfare hasn't been addressed since 1997, and so that really needs to be updated, that whole chapter needs to be updated. And the focus is really on the medical pieces of that, Watertown, Cottington County has been fortunate, we haven't had a ton of medical, but there's a lot of other counties that have really been inundated with the medical issues, and so looking at closing some of the loopholes and some of the issues, that, for example, hospitals can submit an application without, for county assistance without talking to the patient or would be client press. So closing some of those loopholes, so that if somebody's gonna do an application, it would come through them and not the hospital, addressing those kinds of things with that, we have a list. So, and again, Lee was helpful, Lee Shonbeck was helpful in explaining the process we need to do, we need to do a whole lot of work before we're ready, so it, it's not gonna obviously happen this year. Hopefully, we can get some work done within the next year so that we can be ready to bring it to the state legislature next year.
Right, as an organized group.
In an organized fashion, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Listening to some of the legislators, it sounds like the regional mental health facilities are gaining some traction, it sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, a lot of people are really in favor of it, and that's good, so I think that there's gonna be something happening there, which is good.
It is.
Good for everyone.
Makes sense to have regional, so, I think, in South Dakota, being a rural state.
And that's kind of where they went with the transits, you know, to make them regional, you have, you get more support when you see like you're trying to help yourself, rather than staying so many little ones that everybody works together, so.
Yeah, yeah, those are all good progress for our state.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Keep those girls straight over there, okay?
All right, let's move on to item number seven, approve indigent burial rates, and.
No, that's Sarah's, you wanna go ahead and?
Now that you say that, that was something I should have mentioned, we had talked about updating the standard rates in January. I don't, I wouldn't recommend any changes in any of the rates this year for.
We just have to reestablish the.
Yes.
The current.
Yeah, but, so the funeral as well, Cottington County continues to be at the higher end of the state reimbursement.
So we're currently, for a traditional service, we're currently paying $3,952 for cremation, $2,575, and then the opening and closing of the grave.
I would make a motion to just leave those rates as set.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those have been in place for, ever since I think I was on the board, quite, quite some time, so.
We talked about that quite a while.
I'm sure it was that one we, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight, action to approve auditor's account with treasure and note registered deeds fees.
This is a report of the cash and cash items on hand as of the last day of business day in December. Second page shows you where our cash fund balances are, and then the register of deeds fees that were collected in the month of December were $50,872.90.
For a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Gable. Gable made the.
I'll break the motion.
Okay, yeah.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed, oh, sorry, Lee, I'll give you a chance to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number nine, action to authorize a chair to sign Title VI Policy Statement and Advertise Notice of Public Rights.
This is something we're required to do each year to qualify for state and federal grants. We have to adopt a Title VI Policy Statement, which has not changed, and then you also need to authorize me to publish our Notice of Public Rights.
Or a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman, are there any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries.
Madam Chair, can I, is there any chance we could back up to item number five? The approval of the minutes, I just noticed an error in the minutes that I think need to be corrected.
Okay, what?
Do we wanna, do we wanna take that later? It's on page two. In the minutes, it's under corner compensation.
Okay.
It says, motion by Van Duzen, and seconded by Van Duzen, now to save, so, just a clarification. It just happened, that just happened to catch my eye, I didn't catch it the first time, I read through.
That's fine, I will just correct it. I don't think, nothing's been published yet or sent anywhere, so I will.
Okay, so noted.
But if I, yep, it is a motion by Van Duzen, seconded by Gable.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Very good. All right, let's move on then to item number 10, action to set compensation of 2022 election judges.
Something I meant to get a handle on, and let me see, I just need to look back at last year.
We read that, Raj, you're.
Yeah, and I think, I would like to set a new month this year based on COVID still hanging around. It's hard to get people to help you out and see what we're at right now. Okay, currently, we are at $175 for Election Day, I'd like to make that $225 for anyone who is willing to serve. That's my request.
All right.
Plus $50 for attending the election school.
All right, for a motion, if anyone is still inclined to raise that from 175 to 225 plus $50 for election school.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Gable.
I'll second.
Second by Van Duzen, do we have any discussion on this matter?
I just, for clarity, it's, it's $225 for the election day.
For working on Election Day, correct.
And then $50 for the.
For the schooling, yes.
Yeah, 275.
275, for people to take a day of vacation from work or put theirselves in a position to sit at the polling place for over 12 hours.
We appreciate them doing that.
Yeah, and our number, as our, our generation of people, you know, typically, there's some of them that are no longer able to do it, so it's becoming quite an issue to get those positions.
We need to recruit some new workers, yes.
So, all right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, all right, that motion carries. Item number 11, delinquent property tax lists available for review.
And I have those in my office, it's a list of everything that was unpaid as of December 31st, 2021, if you want to look at it, those are ready.
Right. Item number 12, action to approve planning and zoning board appointments, and those are in the package.
I've been told by the Weeboard Supervisor, Steve Mollengrath, that Jim Thean and Brad Henricks are willing to serve for another three years, if you are so inclined to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman, do we have any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries, and now the planning board.
Planning board members who are up are Mark O'Neill from Henry and Mel Reese from Watertown, and Luke has indicated that they would remain on the board.
Motion approved.
Second by Johnson, second by Van Duzen, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. All right, let's move on then to item number 14, action to approve contracts with First District Association of Local Governments for Property Parcel Database and GIS Website Services.
So let's take two motions on this, the first one would be to approve a contract for First District for the updates of the director, of the Director of Equalization parcel needs, I talked to Shawna, and she recommends going with this contract, it is $6,000 per year.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries, now we'll go with the GIS website services.
And this is for the provision of services relating to the development and hosting of the city-county GIS website. The funding for this project is shared between Watertown Development Company, Cottington County, Watertown Municipal Utilities, and City of Watertown. The total project cost for the year is $10,000, Cottington County share is $3,100.
Move to approve.
All right.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Van Duzen, second by Johnson, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor.
Cindy, how does this, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Yeah, just how does this compare to last year's costs, is it the same?
To my best recollection, it is the same, yes, I believe 3,100 is what we paid last year also.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this, this is the thing that allows people to, you know, among the other, among the other uses, to go, go online and they can see, you know, all the plaques, all the parcels.
Yes.
It's a very handy website.
Basically.
Yes.
Very handy website.
There's a lot of realtors that use it, let me, I wanna double check that amount, please, so.
People go to the First District Association of Local Governments website, there's a GIS link on there for the neighboring counties.
One thing I.
Cottington is on there.
On the planning and zoning board, it's really nice.
3,100 is what we paid last year.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Policy updates review, possible action, do you have anything for us, Natalie, today?
Okay.
Good morning Natalie.
Good morning, all right, so just a follow-up from our last discussion, I did send you an updated handbook with some additional changes, so I don't know if you, if you have any questions on that, if you wanna go through that. Just a quick overview of what was changed from what we talked about last time, I did take out the org chart, there was an org chart which was outdated even from last year, so it just needs to be removed and just inserted. Lee, do you have that, I don't know if you wanna pull up the handbook, it would have been emailed last Tuesday.
Yeah, I think, yeah, January 4th.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm pulling it up now, but.
Okay. Yep, thanks.
It's gonna, yeah, it, it might be good if you just highlight, go ahead and start highlighting the changes.
Yep, so anyway, so that's page seven, so I just put in the chart that you guys have for Commissioner Liaison, took out the org chart. And COVID made an update on that, so on page 50, we had specifics about when they could return to work, and that has changed recently as you. we had specifics about when they could return to work and that has changed recently, as you know, with the CDC. So, um, I just took out any reference to days and just said, you know, following CDC healthcare providers recommendation, Department of Health, I guess, not CDC. Um, because I think that's the safer way for us to go because things keep changing, so.
Have to keep changing it, so.
Um. And I'm just trying to see, looking through the list, I think everything else is what we had discussed.
The health insurance that we, you and Cindy worked out.
Yes, yes, thank you for highlighting that. Yep, so Cindy, um, clarified, we worked on the language on the health insurance section, so eight oh one, so what the language reads now, sorry, let me just get to that.
What page is that?
Yep, um, forty-six. So, the area that we really need to clarify was how we're paying on, um, employees where if they have their spouse or dependents, if they add on. Um, so the language, we changed that to, for employees, we seem to insure spouses or other dependents on their health insurance plan, the county will pay fifty percent of the cost of the lowest deductible plan. The employee can select from the available plan options, because there are three options currently on our plan. If they do choose a higher deductible plan, the county will pay the same, um, will, county share will remain the same. And then we added language in there confirming that counter, county commissioners have been determined eligible to participate in the dental insurance with the same option and cost as regular full-time employees. So, yep, that was the language we just clarified there.
And then, um, part-time, we took that out completely then?
Under twenty?
Um, no, so it just says, so they have the option on the dental and that's, yeah, what we put on there. And then in this section, it doesn't refer to part-time at all.
Okay.
Yep, under health.
That was taken off, okay.
Yeah, oh, this language that Lee has highlighted, yep, thank you. Part-time employees may participate in dental benefits at the employee's expense.
Okay.
We do have, um, I do think, you know, still a need to determine how we're going to handle part-time employees that actually hit thirty hours. So this is an issue because of the Affordable Care Act. So we should be establishing a look-back period, um, which can be, it can vary. I would recommend the longest option that they give you, which is twelve months. We only have to do this once a year, but that you should be going back and looking at the hours. And if they average thirty hours according to the Affordable Care Act, you need to offer them health insurance for the following year in which they would be eligible. And then they stay on that even if they drop, and then you do the look-back period again. So, that is not like something that we are setting, that's the government, so.
Would be for thirty hours, and that would be for the following year.
Right.
Following year, they didn't do the thirty hours and they would drop off automatically.
No, they still get it for a year. Like, once they qualify, they would stay in for whatever your same look-back period. I mean, that's the only reason that you could do a shorter look-back periods. You could say, well, we're going to make our look-back period six months, we're going to do this twice a year. And then you could, if they weren't still hitting the thirty hours, you could drop them at that point then, yeah, after the six months, like if they weren't still qualifying, but I'm just saying for ease.
Would it be prorated then? It wouldn't be, if it's thirty, it's not considered full-time, so it'd be prorated.
So you would have to decide what you want to offer at that level. I mean, they have to be offered it, doesn't mean you need to pay a hundred percent like you pay for your full-time employees, but you have to pay a minimum of fifty per Sanford requirement.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty percent.
So it would be a max.
Fifty percent.
It would be a maximum of two years? Have we have to offer that or longer?
Um, no, just like, so you have to decide like what your look, like what your look-back period is. Let's just say you say it's a year. So then now in January, we would go back and we would look at the last year for our part-time people. Did anybody average thirty hours a week? On average or whatever. And if so, then you would have to give them the option to participate.
This year.
This year. And then they get the option to participate as long as your look-back period is. So if your look-back period is a year, then they get the option to participate for a year.
Yeah.
And then you would reevaluate again and look at the hours again to see if they would stay on the next year.
I would think that would be.
It's kind of confusing.
Yeah, I would think that would not be an advantage for those employees because they're going to be bouncing all over with.
Right, it's not, yeah, it's not our decision though whether it's good or bad. It's like, yeah, what the government has established, yeah, yeah. And, I mean, even if you give them the option, doesn't mean, yeah, they have to take it, you know, but you at least have to, you should be evaluating that.
Is that policy the same for old businesses?
Um, it's, the, so Affordable Care Act applies to if you have fifty or more employees. So if it's, if it's less than that, smaller counties may not have to do this.
Sure.
You know, it's just based on your employee count, yeah. So that's the only other thing, like, if we're going to start trying to do that, we should have some language on how we're doing that and what that period is, and so how how we want to handle that.
So first we need to decide what's our look-back. Is it a year? Is it six months? Do we want to evaluate it?
Right.
More often or not? I guess, I don't, we can think on it.
We, we, sorry to interrupt, um, so we need to add language to, uh, to the, to say that, to say what the look-back period is.
Right.
Did you recommend a year?
I am recommending a year, just for paperwork efficiency.
Yeah.
Then you'll have to do months' way.
Yeah.
Because payroll is going to have to do this, looking at it manually.
Yep.
And pulling timesheets and, yeah.
I say we go with a year.
Is that what you would, for your office and the efficiency, doesn't matter for you guys? Like, you, you have to do a whole year at a time or like, how are you? We'll have to both each file five months, make up a, a chart of part-time people and how many hours they worked in any given month. There's no easy way around it, so.
So is that a monthly, just for clarification, is that an average of thirty hours throughout the year?
Right.
Per month?
Per week.
Per week.
Per, I'm sorry, per week.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
So really, I don't think you're going to have many people that, I mean, maybe one. Uh, and it's probably the correctional staff, I would guess.
Yes.
It's one of the same for us with fiscal or calendar. It's our, it's our.
It's our calendar.
Yeah.
January one to January.
Right, yeah, good question.
I was just thinking about our part-time employees.
You don't have it all.
And so.
Six months.
Yeah, so that they shouldn't. And actually, their hire, I think, is seasonal, so that wouldn't apply either.
That's a different law.
Yeah, that's a whole nother.
Contracted and seasonal would be different.
Right, I know, several categories of people.
So do we need to add a sentence right now, or we're going to do that change later, or how do you want to handle that, Natalie?
That is up to you, I guess. I mean, if we could get it all done and just be done with it, that would be nice, but if we have questions or.
I don't know how to word it, but I would make that a motion. That we want a twelve-month period to look back.
And I'll second that motion.
Wait, 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 wait.
I need a motion for that.
We'll do it as all the policy.
As I want, yeah, you're, and don't ask me how you're going to make that motion either. Are you going to make a motion to adopt personal policy as revised?
Yes, but that doesn't have language in there currently.
Yeah, so, I mean, but.
I don't think you want to list every change.
No, no, so, um, we've reviewed, we've reviewed everything, so if the board is of a consensus to put it in the policy, if you're in the, of that consensus, we'll put it in there that way and then it'll be adopted when you do the whole policy.
As a complete.
Yeah, right, so per discussion, that would be added in as.
So I think what we would add for language, I mean, just saying like, you know, per the county, following the Affordable Care Act requirements, we will review, we have established a look-back period of the prior twelve months. Once a year, in January, we will review the prior year, any employees that qualify at thirty hours a week on average for health insurance will be offered at fifty percent cost, right? I mean, they would still have to pay fifty percent or what would you like to do?
We're with Sanford, so we have to.
We have to do that minimum.
Just say treated like, for, just all of the same options as full-time employees.
Yep, they would be offered the same options, but yeah, the question is like, what percentage are you going to pay?
Yeah, so it'd be the prorated amount depending on what insurance company we're with, what they're, what they recommend, what they require, basically, so. And because right now.
And right now it's a percent.
Right, yeah, so we have to go with, with the insurance company that we're with. We're going to make it even more.
If a part-time employee qualifies for insurance, they're going to, and they want single insurance, they're going to have to pay fifty percent of the premium, the county will pay fifty percent, so, right?
Yes.
All right, just want to make sure.
And be the same with, if they had a family, I mean, it would still be just whatever those requirements are.
Right.
Of the insurance.
Those are the current requirements we have, so.
Right, so if we just put it in as per insurance company requirements, we don't have to go in and change those amounts all the time.
Right.
Going forward, yeah.
Now, there was one little, one little hiccup in there that I was going to ask about.
Yeah.
You said, uh, you know, whether they choose the, uh, the three plans. If they choose the most expensive one, or the second or the third, whatever it is, they'll get paid the same. Will, will they get paid fifty percent of the highest one? Because that'd be a higher number than the, or, or, we.
Yeah, good question.
Can we specify which one they have?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, currently, full-time employees can pick from any of the three and you're going to pay a hundred percent.
So what about?
So what about part-time?
Yeah.
Do we, do we or can we set which one we would?
I would say you could set.
But, is that?
But would you, because you let them?
Yeah, I know, that's the thing.
I know.
Then it's.
Maybe a little bit careful.
Maybe being unfair if we say, full-time can have a pick of three and then if you have just part-time, you're going to only allow.
Right. I would say at this point, we let them, we pay fifty percent of whichever three they pick, but I do think that's still something we want to revisit for full-time as well.
Find out as far as legally, you know, what state's attorney, what.
I, I guess, my question would be what the difference is. Let's say they pick the lowest-cost one or the highest-cost one.
Yeah.
Cindy has all those numbers. Problem.
Yeah.
Doing payroll. What if the employee doesn't work enough months in a certain, hours in a certain month to offset their insurance cost? We can't do a negative.
Right, right.
When you set them up.
They would have to pay for it, that, they would have to pay you first, right?
But if they don't, if they don't make enough payroll.
I, that's a good question. I, I.
We probably need to look into this a little more. I think this is an item we better not probably put in today. I think we need more, we need more information on this, just with all the.
I believe I have a motion on the table and I would like to withdraw that motion.
Sure, right. So, as far as this.
So everything excluding how we're going to handle part-time compliance with the Affordable Care Act.
Charlie, really, what was your motion that you're withdrawing?
Adding this language, I think.
My motion.
Yeah, you, you did not see your motion.
That I didn't have to word it.
Okay, so let's just ignore that whole thing, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Because we didn't really need one, we were just having a discussion that we were going to add.
Right.
It would have died anyway.
Right. If we knew it was.
I think, I think Myron seconded it.
All right.
Healthcare is complicated.
Okay, so, um, we will just we'll address this going forward as, as we get more information and, and find out legally, like what we actually can.
I can follow up on your comments too.
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, so, the rest of the insurance thing is okay, it's just a look back for part-time employees of thirty hours or more a week, so, um, how about our holiday? What was the final bridge on that?
So I added it based on what we discussed before. So, um, we've added the additional stated holidays, Christmas Eve, the day after Thanksgiving is full days, Good Friday is a half-day, changed the language from ten to seven for governor declared. The president part is all, but the governor's still in.
Yep, and it's got to be seven days, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else have any other questions on the updates?
Thank you for doing that.
Basically, what we're going to do is make a motion on the items that we talked about today to add.
Right, well, everything that's in the version that I sent you, because there was nothing in there.
Okay.
About this look-back period discussion. So as it was sent, you should be able to approve that.
Okay.
I have one confusion. The, uh, travel vouchers, travel.
Okay.
That was to be listed in the manual, Lee. Or how is that going to be listed?
Yeah, so we, we had said that the, um, employees needed to declare what their travel is for the year, and you would make an overall motion, so that will still need to come before the board as a separate item, so they need to submit that. And then, um, going, so anything that they don't submit as pre-approved, they would still bring travel vouchers for.
Anything that popped up throughout the year.
Yeah, yes.
Unplanned conferences. If so-and-so around, and it's nice to have a refresher every week or when it, when it comes up that it's so fresh in your mind rather than going back to a manual and looking it up.
It will just be at the beginning of the year, all travel will be approved, and it's those that fall in that they didn't foresee or something that came up that will be coming in front of us. So you can always pull out that email from the beginning of the year that will have them all listed.
So, and I think what we're, what we're trying to get away from was having to approve all the conferences that they had budgeted for ahead of time. You know, that comes to us every week, so we didn't see the necessity of having to do that every week.
Because.
But if it's a conference that comes up that wasn't planned, then they would bring that to us.
Yes.
Ahead of time.
Right.
The commission.
Yeah, because we basically approve their budgets and they have travel in their budget, so that's already been approved through our budget process. But they will still need to turn in their vouchers afterwards, so you'll still see it on the monthly bills. You'll be, see them reimbursements. All right, so I would look for a motion then from someone to approve the updates to our personnel polyas, policy as emailed and presented.
So.
By Johnson?
Second.
Second by Gable.
Second.
Second by Gable.
Again.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, again.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, all right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. It's been a process. Item number sixteen, note office closures for January seventeenth, Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Uh, this is just part of the policy. This is one of the federal holidays that, uh, falls in the policy for county offices to be closed. That'll be Monday, January seventeenth.
Item number seventeen, action to prove claims for payment. Package or on the part of it and email.
So the county claims amount to just over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the state claims, which the large portion of that is uh, motor vehicle license collections comes in at just over four hundred and sixty thousand. Um, we did pay some gym reimbursements in this month's claims. You can see those in there. I really don't have, uh, too much else. Uh, we did pay out to the South Dakota special, or South Dakota Retirement Systems Special Pay Plan. We paid out vacation and sick leave for two of our, uh, retiring employees. Other than that, I did not see anything that jumped out at me.
Out of ordinary?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Uh, not today.
Okay, personnel changes.
Nope, and no travel travels.
Public notices, possible forum of commissioners. I can think of, if there might be a forum of us at.
Uh, possibly government affairs.
Right, that won't be in person.
It'd be virtual.
Right, Alice training that is taking place on Thursday, so there might be a possible forum of commissioners of that.
I think Sarah's doing her interagency thing on Thursday as well, I believe.
Yes. That is true. Anyone have anything else? If not, we'll move on to old business. Does anyone have any old business? About new business, any new?
Well, it would really should be under the open, but I didn't see that.
It will be coming. It's on the next page, right after. Yep, so we'll, we'll open it up to open. Go ahead.
I just had a comment, uh, Jody and the group from the four H did a wonderful job in Denver. Uh, they took second overall. Prior to, uh, uh, there was a team from Texas that was number one.
Nice.
And they had five team members also, and four of the ti, five got And they had five team members also, and four of the ti- five got first, second, fourth, and fifth individually.
Nice.
So they took home some hardware, they took home some plaques, and they did, uh, Jody and the South Dakota SDSU and Millbank, there was one from Millbank, there was one from Mitchell. They really did a good job, and very tyrannian, very tired out when they got there.
Very good.
When that was finished.
And you can't say all this without mentioning your granddaughter.
Uh, you know, she was part of that five-man team.
Yep.
And so she, and yes, I'm very proud of her, and uh.
But you should be.
And she was uh in that second, second-place deal and helped to anchor the team.
Great, congratulations to her.
Good.
And they, uh, so they, they had a good time. It was in conjunction with the Denver Stock Show. Lot of steps, lot of this, lot of that, lot of the next thing, and uh the air connection from Watertown to Denver worked flawlessly. A little, they got out at the end of the gates, but that's to be expected. It's uh, it's.
So you better tell everybody what they were there, how, what did they do so well then? Was it in goat roping, or what was it? You better finish that up.
They, they had, oh, the pictures that I saw, and I haven't talked to Jody.
Was it, was it shooting sports, or what was it?
No, this was live animals. They had llamas there, and they had to take the llamas through a course and uh get them through, I I, I don't know how to describe it. They had two poles with the tubes that you use when you go to the swimming pool, and they had to get this llama to go through that, coax it through that.
It's like llama barrel race.
It's, it was kind of that way, yeah.
Like pole racing?
And they had a skeleton of some, I don't know what it would be, but they had that, and they had to discuss this. There was home living. Basically, it covered everything that was in the four-H manual.
That's great.
So all of the, it could all be there.
Yep, that's great.
I'll congratulate.
It was, it was a, it was a credit to Jody and and then the state, my daughter, my granddaughter got a little, she says, and the coat had an SDSU patch on it, and she goes to Black Hill State.
Still a South Dakotan.
It would be, it would be a nice article, JT, if you get a hold of her, if I get a hold of Jody.
All right, well, congratulations. Uh, congratulations to that group, and I'm sure Jody will report on that probably at her next report, so.
I'm sure she will.
Here are some more details. Um, all right, item number twenty-five, action to go into executive session. Don't have any need. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Lee put a thumbs up. I didn't hear him, but um we are adjourned.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, Lee.
Thanks. See you next week.
It's now quitting time.